Well, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the February meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Education of Lake Mills Area School District. The mission statement of the district is to prepare all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification of the meeting notice, please.
It was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills Post Office and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
The meeting has been properly posted. I would call the meeting to order. And if you would join me in a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call of the board members, please.
Brianna Veslic.
Here.
John Delaney.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Amy Litcher.
Here.
Robert Imperio.
Here.
All members are present. We have a quorum. I would ask, at this point, are there any revisions to the agenda that the board would wish? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion for the agenda.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
A second motion.
Then seconded, on a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. The first group of items, our board reports. Our student board member, Ms. Williams.
Hi, I'm Sydney Williams, the senior class president, and I'm here to give you some updates on the high school. Currently, our boys' basketball team are on a four-game win streak, with one of those games being a win against Lakeside. Their record is 10-11. If they win the rest of their games for in-conference season, they have a shot at winning the conference title. For girls' basketball, this past Friday, the girls beat Columbus, officially giving them the title of being conference champs, and this will be the fourth year in a row, which is very impressive. Their record is 18-4 for the season in all, and they have one conference game left. Wrestling, this past weekend, was regionals for our wrestling team. With three boys will be advancing to sectionals, Caleb Quest, Jordan Tindall, and Ben Buckholz. And now our forensic team, they attended a meet on Monday, February 7th, at Lodi and placed second overall, with two entries placing gold, Lucas Kleinfeld placing first in radio speaking, and with a small group for group interp, Josie Parrish, Hallie Engslayer, sorry, Rami Mann within that group. And the next event is sub-district, which is going to be hosted at Lake Mills High School on Monday, February 21st. And lastly, our Windsor Dance that we had at the end of January raised for almost $500, specifically $485 for our school's food pantry, The Mill. And then also this past week, they raised $105 for The Mill with our sale of candy grams at the high school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Williams? Okay, next, Ms. Veslic and Mr. Imers were our representatives at the State Education Convention, and perhaps you can fill us in on all the activities.
Sure. So I'll try and give you the Reader's Digest of what I actually wrote, because Ken and I compared who would go first, and he said, wow, you have more than I do. So first of all, I was super excited to go to this. It was a great opportunity. I was part of the delegate assembly, and so this was a hybrid model this year. So part of the delegates were online, and then the other parts were in person. We came up with a few technical difficulties along the way, so we had to stop so that we could make sure that we had our quorum, but we made it through. There were 10 resolutions total. Some of them had proposed amendments along the way, but none of those amendments had passed, and so all of the original 10 resolutions are what had passed. I think the delegate assembly was a great place to feel a lot of energy within the room, even though sometimes, you know, as the delegates were speaking, kind of like our public comment, you could just feel their passion and energy. But I think what I always came back to was everything that they were saying was just so student-focused and so student-centered, which was just really joyful, you know, like fun to see that everybody had their heart focused on kids. Then there were lots of different breakout sessions. I missed the first day of those because I was at the delegate assembly, but I think the committee did a really nice job of having relevant and diverse breakout sessions. So one that I, I'll just hit on a few key ones, but one was entitled "The Role of Equity in Continuous Improvement," and this was done by another district, and they showed lots of different tools and the process that they worked through to just literally continuously improve within their district. And I think that it was really important for them to say that, like, talking about data can be really vulnerable sometimes, because this is the heart and soul of what teachers and administration do. But overall, they felt that as they were able to converse and talk about these things, it really helped them grow as a district. You know, she had this one slide that was an elephant, you know, and somebody was standing up on a, I don't know, balcony up above, you know, and that person was like, well, hey, it's an elephant, you know, but the person standing by the tail was like, well, no, it's a broom, you know, and somebody standing by the trunk was like, well, it's a hose, you know. So everybody had all these different perspectives. And then she said that, you know, by being able to work together and look at the data with all of these different backgrounds and mindsets, you know, you just look at data differently, and it really helps build your goal for your district then, being able to see it in lots of different ways. One other thing that I thought was really exciting, which might help us, I'll not have to share as much next time maybe, but their school district said, you know, at the end of February-ish, they always do like a board workshop, so their board can then discuss what they've learned at the retreat or at the convention, so that they can, you know, say like, well, this might be applicable to our district, or this is something we could do, you know, here, you know, and just kind of touch on all the different things that they, they had learned, which I thought was a kind of good idea. Another breakout session that I went to that I thought was really cool was about Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Pyramid Model, and PBS for our youngest students. And these two presenters were from the Wisconsin Alliance for Infant Mental Health, and they said that even though they're, you know, infant mental health, they still focus zero to eight. And they did a lot of, or shared a lot of research and examples of how, you know, this multi-leveled system is really helping to guide social and emotional learning for our youngest kiddos. And so they, you know, kind of looked at like, as our world is changing, as our society is changing, family dynamics, you know, within the kiddo's homes, and our students are changing, our schools have to adapt to then meet these kiddo's needs. And so one of her presentations, or slides in her presentation, had listed a bunch of different skill sets, you know, and she said, you know, how many of you are business owners, or how many of you can remember that interview you were at, you know, and the skills that they required? And then she kind of brought it back to, these are the same skills we're teaching our little kiddos when they come in the classroom, you know, because kids, what did she say? Children use their behavior when they're stuck, and they have no skills, you know, to pull from. And she had some research and data on the amount of 4K kiddos who were expelled, and it was just jaw-dropping, you know, because these kiddos are just in a different world right now, and they don't quite understand, you know, and so it's, like I said, our chance to adapt and help them and teach them those things, just like we're doing, reading, writing, everything else in school. And then the other one that I went to, another one, I shouldn't say just one other, was a superintendent evaluation, continuous improvement conversation. And this was held by two of the WASB staff members, and I think they did a nice job of really showing us some framework and to develop some sort of like growth model to work through as the board and superintendent. And one of my big pullaways from that, I think, was, you know, using objective measurements to kind of make sure you're working through those goals, and you're, and you're either seeing areas of growth or working towards areas of improvement. And the one thing that I liked that they said at the end, because districts were worried about, you know, potential members leaving in April, you know, and how do, how do you do that evaluation when you're having new board members who aren't necessarily then having seen what the superintendent did? And she had recommended that even though these people are leaving, they can still be invited back to have that conversation with you, because it is about all of those months, you know, while they were there. And then that gives the new board members an opportunity to sit in and really kind of learn, like, the process and how it all works. So I was, that was kind of nice to hear, because I think it's important, as you do lose two people, you know, that their, their knowledge and background and thoughts throughout the year are still part of that evaluation process. So I say overall, I loved it. The keynote speakers were absolutely amazing, super inspiring, and yeah, it was just well-done. I was, I was very excited to be able to go. I'm sure my husband got an earful on the ride home every night, but it was so fun.
Yeah, I would agree. It was really well-done. What was, I think, unique about it was there was a lot of district staff involved with the presentations, the development, and in addition to the WASB staff and all of that, some really good sessions for, as a newer board member, there, they did have a number of kind of 101-type sessions, assuming you're kind of coming in to learn. And so in the end, I did a lot of listening and asking questions. Although I, one of the sessions I was in, it was an all-afternoon kind of school finance, school district finance 101-type, and a couple of the people had been there four or five times, just because, you know, you hear, you think of new things. But they really did a nice job of kind of giving something for everybody in terms of their levels, different types of roles people have in education. I focused in, well, I had the finance piece that was an all-afternoon on a Tuesday, and budget cycle, referendums, balancing short and long-term fiscal responsibilities, learning myths, and different learning topics. Probably the, you know, the best thing was they, they had a lot of breakout sessions, and so, and in the breakout sessions, you would be, you would be with other board members, there'd be, and different administrators, and you could say, well, this is a lot of information, what does it mean for me as a board member? You know, where, what types of things do I need to think about, or how do I think about this topic? And that was really a good, the breakout sessions were really quite lively, actually. So it didn't seem to drag on at all, the sessions, and they had plenty of breaks, which was, I was thankful for. And I think in addition, to just reiterate what Brianna said, the, I think the general session, the keynote speakers, were really inspiring. I mean, I, all three, really. They had three large, or three keynote speakers, and I took away just a lot, and they were, it kind of gets you really motivated about the whole, the whole thing. So I was, really felt pretty lucky that I was able to attend, and appreciative of it, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for representing the board at the convention. Next, Dr. Delaney, correspondence that we have received.
The board received, I think, a note from the family of Betty Smith. Betty is the mother of Jane Riedel, who is our current, well, longtime, or long, yes, longtime district employee and current recreation specialist supervisor.
Okay, now we can move into administrative reports. Ms. Naylor.
Good evening. I'm just going to start out with that this week, along with Valentine's Day today, is also bus drive, bus and van driver appreciation week. So to quote the attached proclamation that I have in here, "More than 15,000 school bus drivers in the state of Wisconsin travel over 82 million miles a year to safely transport more than 600,000 students to and from school every day." So I'd like to take this time to recognize and express gratitude for the hard work and dedication of our transportation team. Even during the pandemic and staff shortages, they come together and provide this service to our students and families in the community. So if you see a driver, thank them. To move on from that, I have a couple maintenance projects that I'm going to present tonight, both happening to be lighting projects. The first one is at the elementary school. So the, this project is to replace the LED fixtures at the elementary school that are located high up into the ceilings. They, the reason that we're requesting replacements comes from the fact that these light fixtures are burning out at a high rate, and many of them are currently out of service. The problem is that the cooling system goes away, goes out, and then obviously the bulb burns out. And they've found that to pay for the parts and labor to, to replace these is quite expensive, not only to get the labor to come in, but also the lifts that has, the lift that has to get purchased to get up in there. So they've been waiting until they have a number of them out to rent that lift and then replace them all at once. So the idea is to kind of do it all at once, so we only have to rent that lift once. So let's see here if I've missed anything. So Rod was able to get three separate quotes, quotes from the Electrician Incorporated, Warner Electric Company, and then Midwest Electric. The bids came enlisted here, $21,000, about $27,000, and then $30,000 with Midwest Electric. So the Electrician is the recommendation that we're, we're going with for this project. Rod was able to do a little bit of background checks on this company, because we have not worked with them in the past. So I did not add those in here, but they were all favorable background checks on, on the projects that they've done, similar projects to this is what he had checked in on. And then one thing that you may have noticed in the bid, if you looked it over, was that there was a, there was a piece in there that talked about fluctuation in the, in the market costs of some of the items, and Rod did check with them recently. If you looked at that date and that time, you may wonder why, that there's a chance that that price could go up, but he talked to them today, and they would honor that quote through, if we were to award them with that bid. Any questions with that project?
Can I ask if the bulbs are, are they the same as what was originally put in that pretty much is now functioning after five years, or whatever the lighting system is? Is it the same or a different system?
It would be, I mean, the bulbs themselves, I'm not sure, but they would be replaced with something new that would be more under manufacturing, so they are under warranty. These are no longer under warranty.
Okay.
So I believe it's a whole separate type of a unit.
Okay.
Okay, so then the middle school gym lighting project, so this is in the gym. So over the years, the lights that are hanging above have been damaged by different activities that have happened in the gym, and a lot of the guards and the lenses have been broken and tried to be, be fixed with, you know, as much as we can, but they've gotten to the point where it's becoming a safety hazard, that should some of them get hit again, they could come down. So not for the lack of effort have they been kind of extended to their life as much as possible, but we feel as if it might be a good time to just make some replacements there. So again, we have three bids on this project, them being Midwest Electric, Hill Electric, and then Electric Solutions, with Midwest coming in on the low bid at just under $14,000, and that highest bid, almost $27,000. So we're not quite sure exactly where that one came in, but the recommendation is to go with Midwest Electric, and we have worked with them on a few other projects in the past, and are confident in their work that they can provide. And then also just another note, that these projects are going to be paid out of Fund 41, which is meant for and set aside for these capital project improvements. And I did add an additional attachment in here that kind of gives an outline of what those, that $150,000 that we levy for every year in that fund have been used for. With these two projects, should we pass and approve them tonight, there'll be remaining a little bit, about $14,000, which we have earmarked for another project, which I'll bring to the next board meeting, and that's another project at the elementary school for air conditioning in the server room. Any questions for me?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Olson.
All right. I have two things. One is something that actually we have implemented, but I'm asking you to take action on, since the pandemic plan is an approved plan, and that was the revised quarantine guidelines that we implemented when the CDC changed to the five-day quarantine. So we have students and staff back on day six if they are feeling okay, and so we have been working through that. We have had no problems with that. We've had a few people that have stayed out longer, just because they have been sick and have monitored themselves accordingly, so no issue with that. The second one is the conditional face covering guideline that I'd like to share today. So I'm going to start out, you don't have to read all of this text, but if you're watching the news today, you will see that today Dane County Public Health announced that they will not be reinstituting their face covering mandate in Madison. We heard that Milwaukee is no longer either, so we're even seeing at the national level the face covering requirement starting to finally diminish. But I thought that from Dane County Public Health, the middle paragraph I thought was interesting, you know, they state that just because the face covering order expires doesn't mean the pandemic's over, but that we've made it through the Omicron surge, which we've definitely seen here in the district as well, and then just actively asking people to stay up to date on vaccines, and that they have, at the last paragraph, that the high case levels did not translate to high hospitalization levels as, you know, they've seen in the past. And we definitely saw this as well in the district in December and January through that Omicron surge, that with the shorter quarantine procedures, that people that were testing positive for COVID were able to come back typically on day six, so it was not as severe in many cases of an illness, and they were right back to school. So just as quickly as the positive cases spiked in the district over the winter months, they came down just as quickly. So this was off of the website today. Jefferson County actually has it updated through last Friday, it looks like. So you can see the dramatic increase in cases, but now through the county level, also coming down just as quickly. And this is based on the incident rate per 100,000. If you look at just the actual incident rate, it's even much lower than that. I think the number was 19. And then looking also at a similar graph with the Jefferson County confirmed cases, you can see also where the surge happened, and that we are right now down to very minimal levels at the county level. I know there was some concern with talking with parents, that yes, we look at our internal data very closely, they were concerned that if we weren't looking at the community and the county as well, that we would have some issues, but we do mirror what's going on typically in the county level very closely, maybe, you know, obviously not to that extreme, but when they have a surge at the county level, we see the same surge, and I know the other school districts in the area have had similar cases. Sorry about that. Additionally, something that's a little, probably more unique in Lake Mills is our availability of testing, so anybody that wants a test can get a test. I think because of that, we do identify a lot more positive cases in, in very early because of the availability. However, what we've seen now finally too, is that testing has decreased. We were at our peak in December and January, to the point that out of our 42 appointments that were available, many times people were calling us in, seeing if we could, you know, get additional testing in that day. We had, you know, carloads of families coming in, which pushed, pushed our numbers up. And at that time, we did respond, and we added Tuesdays as an additional day of testing to help with that. Now, as of today, we got the testing reports back, they don't give me names or anything, they just give me this report, 13 people tested, zero positives. So that is also an indication of what we're seeing in our own community. I looked ahead to tomorrow, we only have two of the 42 slots filled, and none other for the rest of the week. When we were at our peak, we saw the week was filled up. I mean, it was very hard to get in to test. Also, the number of people requesting testing is a good indicator of what's happening in the community. As, when we were in December and January, and I would look ahead to the week and see those testing spots filled, I knew like, okay, we've got an issue here, we have, we're starting to see positive cases, you know, so it is a strong correlation to what we see in the schools. And we have opened this up also to the community, so even with the two of the 42 slots filled, that's with everybody, like, opened up to the entire Lake Mills community. So at this point, we, I mean, we don't pay for testing, it's a service of the State Health Service, so we're expecting the testing to remain at the community site, but if we start seeing fewer appointments, we will probably shrink back the number of days that we're having them come in. As it is, they ask usually to leave early, or say, we don't have any other appointments booked, and lately, they've been leaving a good hour before the end of, of the day instead of just sitting there. So with that, I bring you the conditional face covering guidelines, and I'll show you some metrics of what this would look like if it were applied. So as we work through this, we're, you know, the, the main thing is our, our cases are coming down. If we were to have a surge again, like we saw in December and January, which we're hoping we're not, and which we're hearing from the Health Department, they are not expecting that either, that we would be able to respond quickly if there was an outbreak. So if that were the case, we would be able to respond first at the classroom level. I would say that's a little bit more typical of, of what we see. There's, you know, if, if there's any type of spread throughout a classroom, that we'd be able to put some conditional face masking guidelines just to slow that. And I will say, as a caveat to that, when we look and do our contact tracing at the classroom level, I would still say the majority of the cases stem from the adult in the household and are passed to the child in the household. We rarely see transmission in the schools. There's only been a few cases of that when really we were at some of our highest peaks. But for the most part, that's what we're seeing. Right now, we are seeing a lot of our 4K students contracting COVID. We've had about a third of our 4K students get COVID right now, and as we go back, it's not among the 4K students in those classrooms. It really is, you know, okay, mom and dad have it, and now the child is getting it. So that still is what we are seeing at our level. The grade level one is somewhat applicable. We did have an instance earlier in the year where we did see some, some spread across the eighth grade level, we had a little bit at a second grade and a fifth grade level. This is more at the middle school level, because we don't really have a classroom level, or even at the high school, there's not really a classroom that we would say we need to mask up. But if it was spreading through a grade level, like we did earlier in the year with eighth grade, we would say like, okay, like, there's something going on in eighth grade, and they're all on one floor, they tend to all be in, you know, the same classrooms, we would implement that. The building level, there, really what this has come from is looking at other school districts around the state who have set a percentage of the number of students and staff in a building, and I've seen it as low as 2%, which is what I'm proposing here. I've seen it as, you know, next door in Jefferson at 3%. I've seen even higher numbers. When I looked at what 1%, 2%, 3% looked like in the buildings, and knowing how we've been able to mitigate our positive cases, 2% seemed like the appropriate number, where it would get to a level where there, there tends to be a lot of positive cases in the area, and I will show you that graphic next. Before and after school, still proposing that they remain optional. We've been optional since the first day of school. We've had very few issues with that. We even had a winter dance that was unmasked and did not have any outbreak after that dance. Buses, we have no control over. Public transportation is still governed at the federal level. They, the current order, sun sets on March 18th, from what we're hearing from across the, the state and at the national level, that they will probably reinstitute that. As a reminder, that covers all public transportation airplanes, and it just so happens that school buses are lumped into that category. That one, like I said, we have no control over. Oh, I am going to go back to that one. On the sidebar, so if this was approved tonight, we would be, I would be getting out parent communication tomorrow, and then we would start with Friday of looking at our data, because we're doing a look back on the previous seven days, then it would go into effect on Monday, the 21st. So the goal- So the goal is then every Friday, we've been meeting, I should say, I've been meeting with Tony every Friday at approximately ten o'clock to go over the COVID numbers and transmission rates and things like that. So that's not a change from what we're already doing as we analyze our data internally. Then what we would do is if we would need to institute a mask mandate at a specific school or district wide, we would let parents know on Friday afternoon and it would take effect that following Monday. So when you apply the two percent or higher at a building level, you can see at the elementary that it's equal to or greater than fourteen cases. Middle school is ten, high school's eleven. And then we would look at district-wide thirty-four cases. In that yellow column, we would say that's between the one and almost two percent that masks are recommended. If they're in that range and then anything that's one percent or lower, we'd say that they're definitely optional. So in the red would be the only time that we would say they are absolutely required. Looking at our data from the beginning of the year till now, you can see that the areas in the blue would be where the masking would be optional. Yellow would be highly recommended and red is when they would have been required. So as you look, you know, thinking back to what was going on in Lake Mills at that time, we were doing pretty, pretty good in September and October. We had a few days off in October. We saw that the cases start to increase after that October break. And then they just kind of started building from there. Really where we saw the greatest surge was during the week of Christmas break. We saw case numbers coming in while everybody was actually off of school, came back to school. But we also, that mirrored the county and it also mirrored the state at that point. So everybody was experiencing that surge through January and then into February. You can already see that our numbers from last Friday that are there at the end column are really starting to drop down. I would say at the elementary level, right now, those ten cases do mirror what we're seeing in some 4K and kindergarten classrooms. But for the most part, the other schools are doing pretty well. Just wanted to make a note with the district-wide face covering requirement. If you look at those few dates in January, there, January third, January tenth, were over thirty-four cases in those four weeks in a row. But you can see some spotty holes where maybe the building wouldn't have met the face covering requirement. But knowing what was going on district-wide at that time, because we had surge and we've got siblings in all buildings, we, that would have been a point that we would have required face coverings across the district just due to our high numbers. And parent survey on face coverings. So we administered, I should say, I administered that in January during the height of our surge, unfortunately. We do have, we did have six hundred and eighty-six responses. And so this is the results of that survey. So because we had the other question that if anybody had any other options, they were free to list that. However, those options did fall into these three categories. It was just that people wanted to explain themselves, think a little bit more in detail. So what I did was took the percentage of those and matched them up where appropriate. So you can, you can see that we had about thirty-nine point five percent that prefer requiring face coverings to the end of the year. Forty-three point five percent preferred optional face coverings. And only seventeen percent preferred a guideline, even though that is what I'm recommending tonight. And I've said, you know, all along, if, if the guideline works and you can see how that would have worked, then at least we're able to respond to any type of surge in positive cases and mask up. However, I do believe that the timing of this metric and the fact that case rates are falling so dramatically that I would expect that we probably would remain without face coverings unless something very unusual would happen. Even in consulting with the Health Department, they themselves said that they thought by the middle of March, we would be, the area would be in really, really good shape. I can say with the Dane County news today, we're probably only about a week ahead of the Dane County schools. And with talking with several of them, I expect that several of them will follow suit as well with having, moving to not requiring face coverings. We've, we've seen it in all parts of the state. It's been in the news quite a bit here this past week. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Tanya, are we going to continue to provide masks for anyone who wishes to wear them?
Yes, and I should, you know, when we say like masks are optional, I, I know there will be several, a lot of parents that will still, you know, ask that their parent, that their children are wearing a face covering, will communicate that to teachers. And I think that's the goal of this, is that if you do want to wear a face covering, by all means, wear a face covering. If you don't, don't. I see that in our after-school programs already. So I, I'll go into the high school after school. I will see, you know, athletes or other groups that have chosen not to wear a face covering for the after-school programs. I will go in other clubs or, you know, other places. And I, you know, several students are wearing face coverings and it's not a mandate after school. So I think, you know, when I look at the high school level, I see students already making their own choice. I would expect that at the elementary level, parents will be making that choice for their children. Middle school is always probably a fight with your parents, as I remember having middle school children. But, you know, we, that, the teachers will enforce what the parents are expecting out of their own child. So we want to make it very clear, like I did back in August, that, you know, we don't expect any type of bullying to occur. It's still a choice. I think I was talking with several people that, you know, looking at pictures from other school districts across the state, you always see a mixture of face coverings and not face coverings. So I mean, even in school districts that haven't had a mandate from the beginning of the school year, you, you'll see, you'll see both things happening. It's not, I wouldn't expect that we say we don't require face coverings and all of a sudden, nobody's wearing them. That's absolutely not the case and you can see that from our parent survey.
What would be the difference, I guess, in messaging when it's between moderate and low? Highly recommended, what would be the, I guess, the requirements or not, highly recommended or optional? I mean.
I think, you know, when, when we go back, let me quick look. You know, when I go back to the beginning of the year and I look at, you know, that, the month of September and you look at the number of positive cases that were occurring there, I mean, that is so low that I think, I guess, that's more for a parent, you know, that I feel like, okay, that the numbers are so low that there's really very little safety risk to my child. You know, when it starts, when you start seeing numbers creep up, I think you start thinking like, you know, this middle November, December, like, ah, like, all right, like maybe, maybe that's a choice you want to make as a parent. Like now they're in the yellow, maybe I'd prefer that my child wear a face covering to school. But that's totally up to the parents. What we will be doing, and I have to say Megan is a saint because all of this adds a lot of extra work to her, is because I know that if we move to this metric, there's going to be parents that are concerned like, oh no, now I've got, you know, children that are not wearing a face mask next to my children that I want to have, you know, a face mask on. So what we are going to attempt to do, and this is not scientific, but we're going to attempt to like put each day the number of positive cases we're seeing in the district. However, we don't, you know, we don't always get the data, you know, right on a timely manner. And as you know, if parents, if somebody tests positive, sometimes it'll be a day or two before we will find out. So I guess it's not completely scientific. But I think as a parent, if you're concerned about it, at least in your child's school, you can see the number of positive cases we're seeing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So it's not like you got to wait all week Friday, oh, it's a surprise, they're low or they're high. So I think you can see it either building or you can see it gradually tapering off. And, and for parents that really want that peace of mind, we will have that out on our website so that you can see how the week is trending. Because we do have, we do have blips, we do have ups and downs, as you can see on this chart. So I think that helps a little bit, you know, as well.
Well, this item is later on the agenda for action and discussion. And so there'll be an opportunity, obviously, to ask Dr. Olson additional questions or clarifications as, as we go through that process. So the next item on the agenda will be community input. I note that we have six people who have indicated an interest in speaking. And if there is no objection, I would, would ask to waive the fifteen-minute time limit and allow each person to speak. And I know that three minutes doesn't sound like a lot, but I'm quite sure that we can get the message. So if each person would come up and identify themselves again and indicate your address, the first person is Sheena Wedenfeld.
All right, Sheena Wedenfeld, address is N six four one four Wollenee Road. All right, I know you guys are talking about it later on tonight, but I want to show my support for mask optional and discuss the, some impact it's had on my child's education to have to wear a mask. And I'm sure we'll see issues in children for some years to come from this. My daughter has the IEP, I've discussed this before. School gets extra funding, I believe, for specialists and aides for children with her needs. Right now she has, I had to meet with some of her teachers and go over the things she needs to do. And she has to kind of pedal back a little bit and practice letter sounds that require extra training and exposure to lip movement and facial expressions to help her recite certain sounds. She's also struggling on a social aspect. After doing, saying or writing anything, my child looks to an adult's face for approval or disapproval. And she struggles not knowing what people are thinking or how they're responding to her. I have had one of the most challenging years being a mom and with her education, and it's because of mask. And I'm not sure for what. I don't know what number or statistic you guys can give me to validate setting her education back as far as it has been. And I haven't heard it yet. We can see the impact that this had on many students. You can review the school report card from the last three or four years and see some changes since we've implemented things for COVID. District will likely have to probably budget for specialists to help with these learning losses. And it's probably not just for current students. We have upcoming kids that have spent their entire non-verbal learning years with people's faces covered. Social emotional learning is a focus of the school district. We don't really speak well with words to our emotions until we're well in our adulthood. Some of us don't even after that. And children rely on faces to cognitively register the impact of their words and actions, contributing to their emotional development and their emotional intelligence. We are three years in messing up this developmental milestone. And I fear we're acting a little late on this. And I hope you learn from it and don't ever do it again. As a policy writer, I can tell you that the CDC has had little influence until recently. Typically, I didn't write policies based on CDC, it was based on legislation, equal opportunity laws, OSHA and ADA. Because these organizations had substantiated their claims through policies and laws, or substantiated their claims enough to make policies and laws. I spent hours on the phone myself with the CDC trying to get ahold of studies where they quoted vaccine and mask effectiveness. And I've ended up empty-handed. Their deadline for studies from November and December were to be given to me by February tenth. And I sat on the phone today asking for them and getting nowhere and being told, ma'am, they're just recommendations. This isn't needed. I don't know about you, but my life has been pretty disrupted by these recommendations. And this is unacceptable. It goes to show that mere recommendations are not always factually based and they are disputable. In the future, I request that you ask questions, advocate for the community and our kids' learning to the fullest extent. Justify decisions with valid research sources and especially when the topics are this controversial and are believed to be infringing on people's rights.
Thank you.
Erin Fortier Meyer. Good evening, Dr. Olson and members of the board. My name is Erin Fortier Meyer and I live at four thirty-two Fremont Street. I'm here today to voice my feelings on conditional masking in our school district. I strongly encourage the board to set metrics, metrics based on local data and public health department recommendations rather than public opinion. As a military veteran, I served our country to protect the freedoms of all people and have made sacrifices for the well-being of everyone. I frequently hear the word freedom being used around the subject of masking. Many people go without masks in public and wear that as a badge of bravery or of patriotism. To me, true patriotism means acting for the common good rather than in one's own interest. Not that long ago, people thought that they had the right to smoke cigarettes wherever they wanted in public. In this instance, we have thankfully moved on as a society. People have realized that their choice to do this had negative consequences for others. My wearing a mask is for the protection of others. Others wearing a mask is for the protection of me. Making masking conditional removes my family's ability to protect themselves. I'm the father of three young children, two of whom attend Lake Mills Elementary School. My two-year-old son was just released from the hospital two days ago for his third recent hospitalization from respiratory distress caused by transmissible viruses. During his first hospitalization, there were no local beds available because all of them were filled with COVID patients. He had to be rushed by ambulance to Milwaukee. And I can tell you from personal experience that this is something no parent or child should ever have to be put through. People act as though the pandemic is over, but from speaking with hospital staff and looking at the data, I can tell you that this is not the case. Every county in Wisconsin is either currently rated critically high or very high for COVID-19 disease activity. Please continue to provide a safe environment for our children to learn in.
Thank you. Nikki Giraud.
Nikki Giraud, ten twenty-one East Mills. On this Valentine's Day, instead of sitting across the table with my hubby fluttering our eyelids at each other, here we are with a far more important task, fighting to get our children unmasked yet again. It's been nearly two years since this pandemic affected our lives. And it's been almost that long that many of us have been trying to get the school's mask mandate lifted. All we have been asking this whole time is that you make masks optional. That's not to say that masks are forbidden. Those that still feel protected by masks are welcome to carry on wearing them. This way, nobody is forced into wearing or not wearing a mask. If you watched yesterday's Super Bowl, you saw the actors, athletes and elected officials in the stands without masks. Moreover, the seventy thousand other fans, maskless. Miraculously, as if by an act of God, COVID is over, or at least it took the day off. The science is finally catching up to the truth. Masking mandates with cloth masks or anything shy of a fitted N ninety-five mask do nothing, absolutely nothing to stop the spread of the virus. We've been saying this for months now. We've been sharing data and as Sheena said, she's been pushing our own CDT to show us the metrics that they are basing their science on to no avail. We've asked Dr. Olson and the board to show us by what peer-reviewed metrics they are basing the school's mandates on. She replies, they are studies on both sides. Well, that's fine. Can you show us the studies that you are basing this on? There can be no discussion when there are no numbers by which, by which to begin these talks. In a recent study of eastern Tennessee counties from October to December twenty twenty-one, where masked counties were compared with mask optional counties, what would you guess the results would be? Well, obviously, the masked schools had far fewer COVID cases than the mask optional schools, right? Wrong. In fact, the masked counties had more COVID cases. Four point seven percent masked and four point six percent unmasked. I would love to see the case studies from my own school. In fact, I've just seen them. I did ask Dr. Olson for them a few, a few times, but never got them. I have got, I did get the numbers from the other Jefferson County schools who are all mask optional. So I will be doing a comparison now. Dr. Lena Wen, a medical doctor and mother of two and a CNN contributor, has changed her tune as well, now saying the cloth masks don't work. When the polling changes, the science. When the polling changes, the science, you know it's time to pack it in. This mask mandate must end, and it must end tonight. This school board will be forever known as the one that put ESSF funds over the mental and physical health of their students by masking them, and that is unacceptable. Considering the school district puts mental health above even education based on the strategic planning meeting last year, it's quite disturbing. The two-year COVID emergency is over. The mask mandate must end now.
Thank you.
Mary Klein, 943 Stoney Road here in Lake Mills. I am speaking as well in regards to having masks be optional for our children. I did email the board. We basically, a lot of parents have been coming to these meetings since May of 2021, when other districts started making masks optional, asking for that to be done in Lake Mills. We led the way with the masks in going to school in August of 2021, when a lot of schools went virtual. I had hoped that maybe Lake Mills would take the lead in that again and go masks optional and show the county how it's done, but alas, we are the last district in the county to even be considered for masks masking, or masks optional. Please follow suit. Watertown, who's a bigger district than us, has been masks optional since May, and I believe that they are still masks optional to this day. Yes, there are students that wear the masks, there's a lot of students that choose not to. They don't seem to have as big of an outbreak as everybody in Lake Mills thinks there is around here. We are also in normal cold and flu season, people seem to be forgetting that. So what did we do in years before COVID? We didn't shut the schools down, we didn't do whatever. You kept your kids home if they were sick. Otherwise, we continued on with life as normal. I understand there are kids that have pre-existing conditions and wear masks for that reason, and I get that. If my child had that, though, I would expect that to be on me and the school and not on everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Riedel.
Hi, I'm Nick Riedel, North 8869 Jordan Road. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Here we are, about two years in, still wearing masks, and it looks like our numbers are still going up. So my question to you is, how much longer are you going to keep masking our kids with the numbers still going up? According to you, masks work. So if we've been masking our children this entire time, why are numbers still going up? At what point in time will you admit your plan's not working? At what point in time will you say, "We've been wrong, we should have left it up to the parents"? When I coached the school district, we used to tell a definition to our kids. Insanity is the definition of doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. I would like to bring those kids in to teach you guys what that definition really means. When will you start listening to parents instead of just skimming over our emails? When did you become experts on the health of our children? Not a single one of you is qualified to tell me what is right and wrong for my child when it comes to their health. When one of us gets the sniffles and we go down to Walgreens, I can guarantee not a single one of us buys the exact same thing off that shelf. Why? Because they don't work for everyone. It's time for the Board of Education to leave the health of the children up to our parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janelle Pauli, 1041 High Street. And I'm here again because your COVID restrictions make no sense. There's still no science. We've asked, we've begged, and there's still nothing. Nothing's been presented on the efficacy of masks. We've seen no facts and no data. Tonight, we saw some numbers about cases. We've seen nothing on the effectiveness of masks. We saw spikes despite a mask mandate in place. So are masks working? You've left an entire community wondering why you are doing what you are doing. You've rescheduled meetings recently on short notice, and this adds up to parents not being able to trust this district. The CDC has recently pulled back their restrictions. We also heard already that Dane County is letting their mask mandate lapse as of 3/1, and we are the only school in the county with a mandate currently. So I think it's time that we consider the damages of masking, including the possibility that RSV cases can be caused by masking. It's time to be honest with parents and admit that you cannot control a virus with or without masks. It's time to let the science speak for itself instead of playing politics with children. So what do people want? We want a dialogue. We want you guys to explain why you are doing what you are doing. We want a debate on public policy that represents everyone and puts all sides of the issue on the table. We want the links to the studies that you are looking at, and we want the scientific studies to stand up to questions. We want, we saw tonight that only 40% of people who answered your survey actually want required masks. So do you guys really think that it's fair to the four-, five-, and six-year-old kids in this district to pay the price for what other people are doing in the county? Do you look at the county stats instead of actually looking at what's going on in our own community? Do you want these kids to pay the price for what people in other cities are doing at festivals and activities when their numbers spike? Or can you look at your own data and compare it? I think it's time that we just all admit that the masks aren't working and give parents a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And this month's consent agenda includes the January 10 regular meeting minutes, the January 24 Finance and Personnel Committee proceedings, the January 24 and 31 special meeting minutes, the January Treasurers Report and Vouchers and Invoices, the Personnel Report, and an overnight baseball trip. Are there any items that you wish to speak to separately? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Just a clarification on the baseball trip, that that is something that the district will have no responsibility or cost for. So I'd like to have a roll call on the motion, please.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the wages for the 2022 summer school.
This item was discussed in the Finance Personnel Committee meeting in an attempt to hopefully encourage teachers to, from our own district, to teach summer school this year. So as presented here.
Right. So I'd entertain a motion for those wages.
I move the board approve the 2022 summer school wages as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, and those, as noted, were discussed during the Finance Committee meeting. If there are no questions or comments, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is a revision to the employee handbook relating to vacation, and this was another item that was discussed during the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. So I would entertain a motion for its approval.
I'll move the board approve the employee handbook revision for paid vacation for full-time employees as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a roll call vote, please.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Abstained.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. The next item is the approval of the Wisconsin Public Educational Network renewal. I see. So the organization changed their fiscal year. So we typically would be renewing this at a different date.
Correct. Usually, it's closer to the summer months.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion for the renewal.
I move the board approve the renewal for the Wisconsin Public Education Network.
I'll second.
If there are no questions, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the lighting project at the elementary school that Ms. Naylor described during her report. I'd ask for a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the proposal with the electrician and the amount of $21,720 for the elementary school lighting project.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. It is noted that this is a part of our capital project budget for this school year. This is the low bidder for the project. So if there are no questions, a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the project to replace lighting at the middle school gymnasium. I'd ask for a motion.
I move the board approve the proposal with Midwest Electric and the amount of $13,885 for the middle school gym lighting project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, that was included in Ms. Naylor's report, and likewise, the funding is from the 2021-22 capital budget, and this is the low bidder. So with no questions, a roll call vote, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is the revised quarantine guidelines, and it's my understanding that this is to be consistent with the revision that the CDC made in December.
Correct.
So I'd entertain a motion for that.
I move the board approve the revised quarantine and isolation guidelines for COVID-19 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
So moved and seconded. Comments or questions? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the face covering guidelines as presented during Dr. Olson's report. So to get the discussion started, I would ask for a motion for approval of those guidelines.
I move, we approve the guidelines as presented tonight.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. For discussion on the motion.
I was going to ask, we had a, with everything going on, we kind of stopped the whole contact tracing emailing out to parents piece. Are we at a good enough spot where we've gotten back into that so parents do know if something's happening so they can have that availability of testing to be more proactive?
I know I go back and forth on that. The hope was not, we contact trace internally, that has not stopped. However, I think what you're referring to are the contact tracing letters that were being sent out. I prefer not to continue with that. It was, there was a lot of work on not only Tony, but also our school secretaries who spent many hours a day with the reduced five-day quarantine. By the time the letters went out, they maybe had two days left on a quarantine, and so, I mean, with, the cycle was just happening so fast that it felt like it was redundant. And so, I mean, we heard, I've heard from parents on both sides of the issue, several that were relieved when we stopped sending out the close contact letters and some not. So I was not at this point planning on continuing that process if we were able to.
The yellow zone, could some type of communication go out if those numbers start to shift into that recommended zone?
So we will have that all on the website. So not only will the daily case rate be on there, but then Megan will have that same graphic that I showed you, and then it'll be color-coded so that everybody knows exactly where we.
Parents will have to check the website to get that information rather than it being pushed out to them?
Correct. So, I mean, with the COVID dashboard since the beginning of the year, I know I have a regular group of parents that check that pretty religiously, which is why we thought we would add that extra step of the daily and then the weekly information out there. If it did go into red, then we would send out the email to that particular school, if it was a building or district-wide, if we hit that metric. Otherwise, so I think parents can check the website. It's readily available.
I think my biggest concern, as we've tried to fill everybody's toolboxes to the maximum for what they wanted as a family, is our youngest 3K, 4K kiddos. And so I'm hearing you say that you're going to try and look at that, those classroom numbers, especially because they are also the kiddos who don't really understand the boundaries in physical distancing and also a lot of hygiene skills. So I think if we can really focus our attention there, I think that would maybe.
And I think what a lot of people don't realize, and I didn't really communicate it widely out, you know, during the district, throughout the district, but we did hit a point where our early childhood class was experiencing many cases, and we actually did not hold school for them that day. It's not required, but we were at the point where we said, "It, we'll just take a little break here in the three-year-old classrooms." So, I mean, that's, those are the types of mitigation things that I think as we see cases coming, that we do respond to. We didn't have it set in a metric, but we took action when it was necessary. I know, you know, going back to the 4K numbers as we started really tracking who in, you know, just looking at how many four-year-olds have already had COVID, it really already hit those classrooms pretty well. I said, over a third of the kids already, you know, having had COVID. So I go, I know, I go back and forth on that as well, but, you know, they are also in school for the shortest amount of time, you know, during the school day. There is a lot of outside time, and even, you know, at the Methodist Church site, the students are split into even smaller groups. So they're, you know, the times that I've subbed over there, you know, they're either seated at a table, they do have playtime where they are grouped together. I feel like in those smaller classrooms, you are able to mitigate things and even, I think, control things a little bit more so. So, yeah, I, yeah, I guess I feel pretty confident in not extending that mask requirement any further, and then just having the early childhood and the 4K kids follow suit with the rest of the district.
So is it my understanding that if you feel like you see something sooner than what that Friday timeframe would be, you would share that out with family? you would share that out with families to note that we're making a change in what's being required right now?
Right. Especially like at that classroom level. And we've done that in the past before, when we've seen some spread at certain grade levels, like, hey, where cases are high. So, yeah, right, I wouldn't wait until Friday if all of a sudden we saw, like, all this building. Typically, we'll see things like that on a Monday morning because a lot of it happens over the weekend, and Tony will come into work and give me a call right away. I also get notifications from the Jefferson County Health Department. So even through my email over the weekend, you know, when we were back in January, I would just, I just saw him coming, and I was like, okay, here we go. So it wasn't a surprise when we got to Friday, like, oh, the case numbers are high. I mean, that's something that we're in constant communication with, you know, across Fort Healthcare and then Jefferson Health Department as well. So we keep a really, really close eye on all of the positive numbers and where they're coming from.
And we should continue to expect, at least to some degree, the testing free, easily available. It may not be the same number of days if the numbers are pretty low. But so, I mean, if this is going to work, then we really need to have access to testing as well.
Correct. I think people have really enjoyed that, whether it's just testing because they're sick, testing to go on vacation, testing for whatever reason. It's been a good community service for those who have wanted to take part in it. And as I said, there's, you know, no financial obligation for us whatsoever. So, you know, if it continues to run, it, you know, it just runs. But the goal is right now to run it to the end of the year. And I'm sure we'll have a conversation with the testing company at the end of the school year as far as is there a need to move forward or not? And I don't know how long their grant lasts either. It's based on their federal funding.
Well, you know, as some speakers have noted tonight, that this has been going on for a long time. It is two years, but it sure seems longer than two years. But as that time has gone on, I think that we've learned more. And I think that, I think that there's been an evolution in the thinking and an understanding of the virus. And I think that we're at a point now where we, where we have vaccinations which are available, we have testing that's available. I think that there's an understanding that masks are helpful, but none of these things are preventing the disease or the virus. The best that we can do is to mitigate and make as safe as possible where we are. And as someone else pointed out, we are not health experts here, but we do have the responsibility. And one of the things that I've learned in life is that when I don't know something, I rely on somebody who does. And there certainly is no shortage of experts. And we can find our favorite expert, I suppose. But that's what we've relied on. And I think that we should continue to rely on those people in the medical profession and then integrate that with our experience here. Because as Dr. Olson pointed out, our experience may be different than in other parts of the state, other parts of the country. And I'm, as I, as I look at this, I believe that we have enough other mitigation strategies in place that allow us to safely move forward and adopt the plan that we have. And there's an escape hatch. If things really get awful, we can do something and we can make a change. So I'm, that's what I think, and that's why I think that.
And I think layered on top of that, though, we also have the good news about Jefferson County. I mean, I think that's a biggie. I mean, the numbers are coming down, and I think that kind of changes things, too. Because everything else alone didn't feel quite so good in the context of large numbers, but now things have settled down a bit.
I was just going to add that I think, you know, hearing you reiterate all of the time that you guys spend looking at the numbers and tracking all of that stuff and where it comes from, and the amount of time Tony spends, I mean, she'll send an email at any time of the day, even on the weekends. And so I think we have lots of people who have the student's best interest in mind and that goal of getting them to school in person every day. And so I think with all of those pieces attached, I think it's, it's just as reassuring, you know, as not only a parent, you know, sending kids, but a school board member that we're, we've done good things and we're on the right track.
Any other questions or comments? Then I would ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye. Motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of gifts. And again, we are, we certainly have a generous community. So I'd entertain a motion accepting these gifts.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for the continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. A donation of books for the elementary school library at an estimated value of $180.41 from Wendy Borkert; a $300 donation to the Lake Mills Rec Department from the Lake Mills Optimist Club; a donation of $431.25 split between the high school's Fall Musical and Spring Play from Schuster's Farm; and a donation of Learning Science II for the elementary school valued at $500 from Greg Hoffman and WPPI Energy.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call vote on the motion, please.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye. Motion carries. And again, with our, with our thanks for the generosity. The next is a preview of the March meeting.
It's going to be exciting.
Items that we may be looking at.
We are putting another group of students in front of the board, this time the fourth-grade care squad. If you've ever walked into the elementary school, you'll know what I'm talking about because they inundate you with helpfulness and kindness. So we're going to have the students present about what they're doing at the elementary school. Also present a staffing update. Part of that will also be a recommendation for the new middle school hire. We should be through the interview process at that point, and I'll be providing a recommendation. And then we will also provide a strategic plan update as well.
Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Okay, I think specifically it would be pursuant to State Statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data over any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Approval of executive session minutes and district administrator contract. So I'll, I need a roll call vote on the motion.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye. It carries.